It's six P M Tuesday, October first. West Liberty City Council Work Session. Present is myself, Mayor Pretend Karen McFerrin and City Council Member Tim Briesen. City Manager, Liberts Communication Specialist Brittany Woodson and then. Clerk. Sherry Hopper. All right, and we're going to be talking about the police department. So Chief Hauser. Hit it.
All right, yeah, thank you for coming. I know it's kind of early, especially in Johnson. So I appreciate making the time here. So I want to talk about the police department, potentially getting a seventh police officer. I know it's something they've had in the past before. They've definitely given some of the services that have happened recently. It's something that's been pushed to the forefront. It's still a work in progress. I've certainly looked at Sherry and certainly had the time. Instead of try to make some secure funding, make sure it's going to be something that's feasible, long term and stuff, because it is. Definitely a, you know, a big expense for the city to take on. But it's definitely going to be a. A needed one with just given how the way things have been going recently. Thank Brittany for getting all my fancy sizes. So a few of the factors of why we need a seventh step is one for officer safety. Because speaking from my personal experience as a police officer here, like bottom of the totem pole from when I was here before and stuff. On night shift, I was the only person here and stuff from, you know, seven P M to seven A M. Majority of my time here, I was the only officer on duty. The response time for musketeen at that point was usually about like twenty minutes and stuff, just depending where they were sometimes. Sometimes I'd get lucky and maybe, you know, nearby or they'd be in Nichols or someone like that, but a lot of times it was twenty minutes and so. Having to handle like some domestics and stuff alone is. Very tense situation, especially when, you know, people know that somebody's going to be arrested or if it's even a more escalated event like. You know, bar fight and stuff like that, trying to handle that alone is very tense, very taxing, you know, physically and mentally. One of the other reasons for time off, right now, like. We have officers that, you know, they've accrued a lot of time off and one of the major complaints since I've come aboard here is that they haven't had the opportunity to take a lot of time off and stuff, just with. The scheduling and stuff and also the sick time and pretty much all the department officers have have kids and stuff, so a lot of times they're trying to choose between. Hey, making sure they're not, you know, messing up people's days off or having to try to stay home with their kids and stuff. It's definitely a hard balance and I think for personal experience. Because during my time here, when you're down, got down to four officers at a few points. If you want to take an extra day off or if you're like, hey, I'm not feeling so great, but I can probably push it and go to work and stuff. You did that because you know, like, hey, if you call them, somebody else is missing out on their day off and it just, you know. So it just makes it very difficult. The next reason is going to be call types, just because we handle a vast array of different call types, which we'll do that shortly and stuff. And some of them, like, you know, it's definitely like, if you go to any other department, it's a two officer call. Like they, they, our departments will wait until another officer can arrive before even the first officer approaches. Here, we don't have that luxury and stuff like that, because, you know, if if we wait, you know, somebody's. Potentially getting further assaulted, further injured and some of that, or it could continue to escalate with I N E N or mention. The next is community involvement, because with how some of our staff have worked, especially recently with like the bigger investigation that they handled. We weren't able to have a presence at like the Latino Festival or the Children's Festival really and stuff, because we were already, you know, everybody was over a hundred hours at that point and stuff, so. The one officer we did have on duty, he was known with responsibilities to handle calls, so you kind of pass through, but we couldn't have a huge like police officer presence in that example. So officer safety is number one, like said, back for high risk calls and stuff like that, that can be anything from. Bar fights, domestics is a huge one, just given our diverse culture and stuff like that and just how, you know, hopefully those are. Domestic sins aren't handled the same way here as they are in like other countries and definitely other cultures and stuff. Is that one for domestic, if there's any physical injury, it's a mandatory arrest, so. So when we go to arrest the perpetrator, it's also statistically shown that. The victim might may also attack the officer when we're arresting the main assaulter and stuff there. It's the highest risk call that officers handle that people don't think about and stuff, just because there is such problem to be like with high tension and stuff for the assault of nature. Same thing with like traffic stops, like there's, like you hear everybody say like, oh, hey, it was just a routine traffic stop. That's not the case. There's no such thing as routine traffic stop, because. We have no idea who's who's in the car or, you know, hey, if they have a warrant, a town over or anything like that, you know, as soon as we stop them, we're like, hey, we saw a headlight out, we stopped him for that. Yeah, that's that's as much information as we have. Until we get up there and we identify people, you know, so we have no idea, hey, the guy just. Committed a huge assault in the town over and then he's, you know, running from the cops and he's like, think about, hey, we're after him and he just wants to get away from it. It's like, hey, we're just stopped for a heaven. You don't know anything. We need awareness of multiple officers, like you said, just some of those call texts that people aren't aware of and just how the response time that we get. And allows more time to attend trainings and take longer for investigations, because we have some. Investigations that are pretty time consuming. I just handled a child abuse case recently myself, because. Just with some of the other investigations we had going on, that was the most feasible option and. Like doing an hour interview with a suspect or even a witness or anything like that, then having to try to transcribe that and stuff like that and put that in and then schedule other interviews, it's very time consuming and. If officers are going to handle multiples at a time, it really limits us, especially when we're staying responding to calls and stuff and trying to do our daily normal like operations. So I just want to touch on the deaths a little bit. Statistically, I was pretty low for law enforcement deaths. But it is something that does happen and stuff. Same thing with kind of officer involved shootings, Iowa is pretty low for that. Statistic, but for an officer involved shooting where everything goes perfectly well, like we have. Say, you know, if the officer was just maybe shot at and nobody was hurt or anything, or the officer discharged their gun and still nobody got hurt. Some of those investigations are very time consuming. Those can take up to three months just to clear an officer where they're on admin leave the whole time and that doesn't even touch on if there's. Any policy violations that we have to take care of on our end, or if there's anything that was done wrong, that can also be, you know, pushed to the back, because we have to wait for that investigation to fail before we can start our own investigation and stuff, so. Some of that stuff can be pretty time consuming. But the biggest issue is going to be duty related injuries and stuff, just because right now we don't have the luxury of like if. If somebody gets hurt for an extended period of time, it's going to put. It's going to tax the rest of the department and stuff, because it's going to, you know, there's going to be mandatory overtime, there's going to be people that are going to be working longer hours, it's going to, you know. They're not going to be able to take time off and stuff, so it's just going to be. So it just could be more taxing on the whole department, so because we don't have, you know, some built in buffers to kind of get us through like some of this, the injuries and stuff. A couple of the cases below, that's actually the stuff that's happened here in West Liberty. There's an officer off for about five and a half months and stuff there, so. Somebody trying to pick up the slack for five and a half months, that's kind of a long time, just kind of like, hey, hang in there, you know, be a company man and stuff, you know, and just try to, you know. Like. Because in today's law enforcement, I mean, you can kind of almost write your ticket to where you want to go and that's very different from when I came on, because when I came on. And tested for law enforcement, there's like a field that people pack, they have to do iterations for how many people were doing the P T test. Today, they're lucky if they get ten people to show up and that's even at the bigger departments, Muscatina, Iowa City. They're lucky if they get ten qualified people to show up and that's not even if they even pass or if they pass the post test or anything. So it's very different. So if you're already certified in Iowa, you can kind of pick and choose where you want to go and so. A lot of people are not really impatient when they see like, hey, there's higher pay, there's, you know, there's. More opportunities for time off, there's more opportunities for overtime and stuff, so it's kind of hard to have people kind of hang on as before, as, you know, we're. Getting a new job at the police department was hard and difficult. It's pretty easy now and a lot of larger departments are even offering. Higher pay and some of that for lateral transfers, because they don't have to put the investment that we do or that anybody else does, like to get an officer certified.
I would just like to add to the cases, the injury cases is the result of. The city's turnover, continuous turnover in the West Liberty Police Department was due to these work related. Again, the workman's comp, there, there are the, you know, the doctor's orders, but at the same time, because we don't have enough staffing. We had our largest turnover period during that, because the morale of the department was down and. Because they weren't able to utilize their time off, they became burnt out, they became exhausted. So I just wanted to add to that, all of that information.
Yeah, I was here multiple times during my. My time here before, where we get down to like four officers and that's. Nobody's taking any time off, that's everybody's working their scheduled days and that just keeps the ship afloat and stuff at that point. Because and it gets really taxing, because it's like, hey, you're like, hey, I get, you know, I'm not accruing time off, but I'm either like. I can't take it or you get to the point where, hey, I'm not even approving anything, because I'm maxed out and I can't even afford to take it, because. Hey, I know if I'm taking my time off, somebody else is going to want to take their time off, and so we always kind of have this understanding, it's like, oh, hey, everybody's going to work it and and just, you know, you're getting your normal days off and stuff, because you don't want to. Kind of screw anybody over or do anything and stuff, it's like, oh, hey, if I take a couple of days vacation, they're going to do that and I'm going to work a week straight and stuff and just really, you know, it's it's really hard to try to manage some of that stuff. And, yeah. When Lee said of recruitment and stuff, it's very hard to come to the department where it's like, okay, hey, I like, especially for newer officers, they're going to end up on night shift. Figure out, end up on night shift, you're going to be alone the majority of your shift, you might have county pass through every now and again, or you might go C E O and like as you're going to Muscatine, but a lot of times. You're here by yourself and it's it's definitely a taxing experience when there's. You know, it's a busier night, there's multiple calls happening like and we we get to a point eventually where we get six officers and that can afford for one side of the schedule to have kind of a power shift, which is really nice. That's the officer usually works like a three P M to three A M during the busier times and stuff there. But as soon as somebody would leave and stuff like that, we'd go right back to, you know, hey, we have a day shift and we have a night shift officer and, like I said, just trying to. Just trying to get through some of the night shifts when it's like busy, blah, blah, and stuff, you're. You're stressed, you're exhausted on the end of your shift and then that that might be just Friday night, you got to come back for Saturday and Sunday night still. Yeah, so like you said, just touching back on the sick. The sick family leave, you know, a lot of officers like they don't have an opportunity, like, you know. If. If they be, if they're on their scheduled shift here, they don't have a doctor who's really like, hey, my kid's sick, I need to stay at home, you know, because they're trying to be, you know, a team player. Fortunately, we've had a lot of guys that, you know, they understand that right now, but. They should be allowed to use their sick time to be there for the family as well, because it's it's definitely not fun to have to try to, you know. Pick and choose, like, hey, am I going to be a good employee or am I going to be a good husband, a good father and it's just, it's not frankly fair. So some of the higher risk calls that we have, nine one one hangups, that's just, hey, someone down nine one one, we have no idea why and stuff like that, since. So a lot of department, that's going to be a two person call, because you have, you have no idea what you're walking into, is that. Hey, some kids are playing with the phone, they hit the S O S button, or is that somebody hitting nine one one, then somebody came and smashed the phones and, you know. Started assault on them or after that. Arm subject, you know, that's sort of stated, even somebody with like knife and firearm, any kind of weapon and stuff like that, that's, you know, secured in the house. And like, so they they might be alone, they might be with people and stuff, so depending on on that information that we receive. It's going to dictate our response, because if they're alone, we can, we can kind of leave them there and kind of let them try to deescalate themselves a little bit and wait for some assistance, but if they're, you know, they're with people, if, you know, if we wait. It puts the lives at risk. Burglary in process or in progress. Burglary in progress, so it's definitely a higher risk call, because we have no idea if there's, hey, are people home during the burglary and stuff like that, is unintended and we're trying to clear. Clear a house by the, you know, by ourselves or with one other officer, it's very dangerous, because. I've cleared houses by myself and stuff like that, you're always kind of leaving yourself prone to, you know, open to. Essentially an attack from some angle, because you're typ- you're typically not. Expected to clear houses by yourself. But sometimes you don't have really an option. Disturbance, that could be anything from noise or sometimes domestics get dispatches and disturbance, just because they hear loud noise, they hear shouting and stuff. Domestics, talked about that a little bit. Before, like I said, that's more of a higher priority risk, you know, possibly go on, just because it's such statistically dangerous call for us with the violence attached to it. Fight in progress, that could be anything from a bar to, you know, potentially domestic or, you know. House party going on. N C O violations, that's somebody that's most likely already been involved in domestic and they've been issued a no contact order. And but we get a lot, that's a common occurrence where people, they'll ignore that order, they'll go to the house and that's a mandatory arrest, so they know that somebody's being arrested. So they might escalate something further, because, hey, they they know they're going to jail one way or another. Pursuits, definitely a higher risk, just because. Going back to the injury related or the officer in. Injury related officer accidents and stuff, pursuits are a high one, because if we're driving at higher speeds and stuff like that, and, you know. It's. Our policy is usually pretty strict on like, hey, if somebody's like going five over, we're not getting their pursuit, but if there's a, you know, forceful felony involved, like kidnapping or anything like that. Yeah, we don't have much of a choice there, like we need to try to apprehend that suspect and stuff, so getting in accidents, a very high probability for that. Stabbing, just with the violence on that, if they've already stabbed one person, yeah. Likely for injury towards an officer is definitely heightened. Subject removal, that can be. That's kind of a wide range is one, that can just be somebody that's, you know, ex boyfriend chose at the house, they don't want them there, they might not have an N C O, they just don't want that person there, or we've had calls here where it's. Like a mentally handicapped subject and stuff like that, where they're not in the right state of mind or they're really agitated, they they're confused and stuff, and they end up going to, you know, different locations and. You know, trying to deescalate that person, so it's definitely, you know, taxing. Taxing event and so. Suicide attempts or threats and stuff, just because there's, there's a high probability for all, for. Suicide by officer, suicide by cop. So there's been instances, instances where, you know, they try to get the officer to shoot at them, because they don't want, they don't want to kill themselves and they just, they do want to end though, and so they try to get. Use the officer as a tool to make, you know, for that means. Suspicious activity person, again, that's kind of a wide ranging one, where it could be potentially a burglary in progress or just somebody trying to, you know, like. You know, it could be any of the calls before that or just somebody like kind of walking around. We've had a lot of. Recent school threats and stuff that have escalated recently, that's and. You know, taking suspicious activities and stuff of people being around the schools, because we have no idea if, you know, hey, they're there to do harm to the students or anything like that, or. If just somebody, hey, they're lost in town, they they see this building and they think that's why somebody could, we've had that happen before too. Like I said, traffic stops. There's places, there's no such safe routine traffic stop. We just don't know what we're getting into until we actually identify the people involved and make sure that, hey, it's just, hey, somebody that lives in town that, hey, they just, you know, roll the stop sign versus, hey, the spell and that's running from the cops, a state away. Warrant checks. Those ones are usually two officer calls, because. Because if somebody has a warrant, they're they're getting arrested, that's a mandatory arrest for us, we don't have a choice. Night incident. And so if we go do a warrant check or have to go serve a warrant and stuff, it's, it's definitely, you know, kind of experience if you're trying to do that solo, because. That most most likely that perpetrator knows they're going to jail as well, because they know there's no officer discretion that they have this warrant put out and that they need to go to jail. Some of the time consuming calls we have. Like I said, the child abuse, child neglect, death investigation, fraud, forgery, theft. Keep the peace. That's kind of like, a lot of times a domestic situation, we have to go there and like, you know, it's for child transfers or it's also for property transfers and stuff, usually domestic partners and stuff that have ended. It can be time consuming, because it's also. It's also kind of like a domestic, it's just where they're just kind of trying to keep everything well, but there have been assaults that have come out of that, even with an officer present and stuff, so it's just definitely more taxing experience for us. The sexual abuse cases and deaths, all these just take a lot of time to just. Interview witnesses, interview potential suspects, you know, try to gather information, recordings and stuff, they have to document that all, it's just a very long consuming process. And so try to do all that stuff and do it properly on top of having to do your daily duties and stuff, like, you know, your normal kind of everyday calls, it's just a very, you know, stressful, just trying to make sure you get everything done, it's just. Yeah, sometimes there's not enough hours in the day. And so a lot of stuff is still waiting, so even when you're on your days off, some of that stuff's still waiting for you to make sure you get that done and, you know, the calls don't stop at, you know, the daily activity. So here's some of our. Calls from the years.
So the first call is going to be twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, second is twenty twenty two and one to twenty twenty three. And then the last one is twenty twenty four to day, so it's not quite the whole year.
Yeah, and so right now, we look statistically, our calls for this year are going to surpass last year and stuff already, just with the track line, like we're going to be. Well, over all by the end of last year. Twenty twenty, that was heightened, because there's a lot of night with all this, and about people creeped up in our house, there's a lot more domestics and activity and stuff like that, just with, you know, the kind of nature of that. And then time consuming calls, just a lot of investigations, like now that people are knowing to report those a lot more, we're getting a lot more close, like those incidences and stuff, so trying to just do the proper investigations, it's take a lot of time. And then this stuff is only based on the initial files and the data, so it doesn't. Doesn't take into effect how many times we took a follow up or to conduct interviews with the police department and stuff. So for the community involvement aspect, like I said, just with some of our resources that we have now, which is that we're being able to handle our most pressing incidences or investigations and stuff, so. Unfortunately, some of the cases like gets pushed on the. The back burner, because we have to take priority with the investigations or the actual proceedings and stuff. We're still trying to do our part here, because that's, you know, everybody knows that that's the main thing, less of these men boys are community policing aspect, and that's frankly why all the cops are here, because they want a police department like that. A lot of the officers here have comfort, bigger agencies, I came from Black Hawk up in Waterloo, Sergeant Blocker came from Marion. Officer Holmes, he came from West Branch, Officer Thor, he came from Johnson County, we don't get to do this to me, policing, that was one of my favorite parts with while I was here, is like. You know, the community treats us like rock stars and stuff, but we want to be there for them and we want to be out there at these events and it's just. With with our limited resources, it makes it difficult at times, just because we have to take priority of, you know, anybody in danger or make sure to handle investigations and we just don't give them to do. As much of that as we like, and so there's an added officer, it would give us more opportunity to have that community outreach that we, you know, evolve our accustomed to.
And just along with that, I mean, again, if, for those that have been involved in past hiring practices of the police department. I mean, the number one priority, then, Mary Counselor continuously points out, was community policing, building that rapport with our. Community members and, again, this, this is the obvious part of. You know, a safe community, but at the same time, it's building back that reputation of trust. With individuals in a diverse community that we have. Along with, you know, that safety and trust comes the opportunity for recruitment for the next generation of police officers. And having that community policing, you know, is also tied into economic development, because you have a safe community. You have friend numbers that are down, and again, living with a community that has. Transient diversity, whether it's age, culture, no matter what, you know, even, even the. Even the difficult and times that we've been going through in the past, I'm going to say ten years with the police department and the change over the transition, I mean. Are, we definitely declined with that community, but since Chief Hauser's been back on. From my perspective, I certainly received a lot of. Good comments and very supportive in the choice that we've made and the team that Chief Hauser's building up. Also is that like trustworthy and safety group individuals. And I'll just tell you, this is something, since I can, since on my time here in two thousand and twelve. They had made a decision to go to the twelve hour shifts, because at that time it was the, it had become difficult. For staffing the police department, because there was already a trend where there was not availability of officers, especially officers who wanted to work in. A community, a smaller community, everybody wanted to go to metropolitan. Cities and. During that time, that's when they had also made, not only that from staffing, but budgetary, they went to the twelve hour shifts. And so it has worked well, having those twelve hour shifts. However, it's just been a continual decline for staffing, staffing coverage and. They had even contemplated back then to take it to eight officers, but then they went to the twelve hour shifts. And then at that time, they said they they still should probably leave it on the table to consider six point five officers, but seven would be better. And so here we are now, you know, we're still, you know, it would be better to have eight point five officers, but. At this point in time, we can't even get the point five officers, so we're part time. Because they're already covering additional overtime in their own full time positions. It's extremely difficult to have a part time roster along with your full time roster. And then it just takes away from the ability for chief and the department to even create a reserve program, because. There's great interest in bringing the reserve program, but when your officers, that's part of that community piece that they're pulled away from. Because they're working understaffed, right now, they're currently working understaffed. They do have some hard time folks, but. As we had talked about it, there's great trust in Chief Hauser and his leadership. That if the opportunity to provide a seventh officer, I believe that he would utilize that officer. As intended, and it would begin to bring back more of that. Quality of life, work-life balance for our officers, so we can sustain. Again, the bigger part of the police officers, you know, the statistics on, you know, divorce rates. And then mental wellness rates and things like that, all ties into what our staff are currently going through right now. And we order to maintain burnout. And a transition and to where we are down to maybe one officer, because we just recently seen this at the West Branch. There's other communities that are going through it, counties are less likely to contract now, because they as well are going through staffing issues, so. So with all of that said. You know, if you have any questions, please ask Chief Hauser and then we can go through the funding piece of it, but. I didn't mean to take that, but just kind of giving some historic information that we've been back and forth over this and. I think I can honestly tell you that prior to Chief Hauser, the leadership we had. It was difficult to find the trustworthiness in them, because they necessarily. Just were not longevity staying here or they weren't really. You know, Chief Hauser is administrating and working, so he's truly doing what council had asked a number of times in the previous police years. And so, but at the same time, there's just. I mean. It's difficult for him to do the administration piece of it and the community outreach, as he's saying, when he's the one that's also handling, you know, the investigations and patrolling and things. And then if an officer wants a day off. You know, then he's pulling in his other officers and they're working, you know, eighteen hour days or back to back, you know, no time off as well, so.
Yeah, we've been fortunate here, we're, what's everybody here to be, I realize what's going on, they've been team players and stuff. Myself included, I have a night shift to help try to get officers some time off and some returning and stuff, and Sherry can attest, one of the. One of the complaints I even got from some of my officers is that. I forget to be the chief sometimes, because I just throw myself in just to try to help out and do my part, because I'm starting to accustomed to that for my time here. Is, you know, because I don't want anybody to feel like, oh, hey, they're overworked or, hey, they can't get a day off when they need, you know, because I see the need and I want to do something to help. And getting us another officer to do that, because. Like what Lee said with our part timers, an ideal world would be if we could have a retired police officer live here in town, you know, doesn't do anything, just, you know, is there waiting on our beck and call and we can just call up for anything that happens. But unfortunately, that that person doesn't exist and stuff, so all the part time officers right now, they they all work a different job that they do full time, so they can kind of help us when it fits their schedule, not what, you know, when the need is present. If you look at the schedules I handed you, anything in red is a deviation from the normal schedule we've had, going back three months. So anything in red's a change and we've had to adjust to make, you know, to make everything work. We've just been nice and fortunate where everybody realized, hey, it's just, we got to band together and try to just keep this. Keep the ship going, get the show on the road and everything. Because there's definitely been times where like I'm scrambling, calling people like, hey, who can, who can work, because I get a late call from. Somebody being sick or, you know, somebody whose kid's not feeling well and stuff like that, and I'm having to go through a list of people to call and try to get things filled and stuff, or vice and filling in myself to make sure. That everything stays afloat, because. During my time here, we haven't relied on county assistance. And that was something that Eric used a lot and something that was accustomed to here, that was something I told my officers up till I'm that. You know, this is West Liberty, this is our responsibility, counties always, you know, say they're willing to assist and everything, and I appreciate that support, but I know that they face their own challenges as well. Because, you know. We're facing staffing challenges, they're also facing staffing challenges, like I have friends at much larger departments that they're struggling to to fill their quotas and stuff, even with their higher pay and, you know, bigger benefits and stuff, they're still struggling to. Get new officers in, so right now I know some, there's some nights where county's going on a limited number of deputies, where they they may have two deputies that cover the whole county. And unfortunately, if if both those deputies are needed elsewhere or need to handle a high priority call on their part. The assistance for an officer here at night shift and stuff might be very limited, if any, at that point, depending what time the calls come out. So in the past, we've been able to rely on county more, but it just with the type of the different changes in law enforcement and stuff, we just, we can't rely on them as much as we have in the past.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that. You brought up, city manager, as well as you and. Yeah, that was one of the questions that uh you brought up, city manager, as well as you and. You probably answered it already, but I was wondering if we did utilize mutual aid with the county.
I I have, I have not, uh, I've been very adamant on that, and that's part of the reason why I like, I put myself in the schedules, because, you know. When I was here that before, that wasn't a thing, we didn't rely on county and and I'm a firm believer, this is West Liberty, you have a police department, if we can handle it, you know, that's our responsibility. Uh, cha- county has appreciated that because they were definitely feeling taken advantage of, I've heard that from a lot of deputies. It seemed like if any kind of pedal would get in the path, that they'd be like, I'll pay, let's have county cover it and stuff, and I definitely wanted to change that. And I wanted to reserve that for, you know, a dire circumstance where we need them. Uh, during the the larger investigation you had, they were more than ready to assist and stuff, uh, you know, with coverage or like just providing resources to us that we don't have, uh. Detective Plato was great from county, she helped us out a lot during that. Uh, and Sheriff Quinn, he, you know, asked if we needed anything, so that he was there for us, and that's why I wanted to reserve us needing county for those dire circumstances versus. Hey, you know, somebody called them sick and, you know, the county can cover it, because. Cause I believe the citizens of West Liberty deserve to have the police service they're accustomed to, because that was one uh complaint I've also heard from some of the citizens and stuff. For some of the meetings I've attended was that they pick up the orange phone and they call and they went to see an officer or it'd be days later till they get, you know, somebody would, you know. Call them back about a response to their incident because, you know, that's just, you know, cause county is there to take the report, but it's giving Wesley's job, their responsibility to follow up with it and stuff. And I just think the people, you know, here, they deserve to have an adequate res- response time.
And the fiscal responsibility unless it was, you know, again, it's our city, it's a, it's our fiscal responsibility to staff officers and. We put a fiscal burden on our county um as well, because if their officers are being called to cover us, then chances are that they're gonna run into overtime. Um, you know, out on their patrol and then that, you know, impacts the county, so I know I heard. You know, those type of responses when we were going through um. Uh, hiring police chiefs that there was some, um, it's not that uh the county didn't wanna support and wouldn't support. It was just some frustration that they were just being leaned on, you know. Leaned on more than what they should, which was impacting, you know, their overtime, their staffing. Since Chief Hauser's been on, I know that we contribute a lot of support to the county as well. Um, because our officers, again, it's important for us to build that rapport with the county, but not the rapport being taking advantage of them. We're for that working with them and um like we said, you know, is when they run into a situation where they're understaffed. Um, that's the report that Chief Hauser's building with Muscatine County. And, you know, I mean, again, you didn't have to deal with Johnson County, is if they don't have officers on those outline, outline. Um, county lines, um, they know that this, these folks here uh are gonna respond. And that's part of the reasons why we we s- we allowed um. An officer who was in West Branch to have one of the older vehicles to to take home because. Again, just his call response, if they're at the Cedar County line or the Johnson County line, sometimes they can be there faster if we have an officer. That may be over here, but the problem is, is right now our officers are already working that overtime and they're not able to get even a time off as much. That it's really makes it even harder to call on our officers for backup support when we can't get a countless support in, so. So again, I mean, these are things that we know nationwide, um, that's happening in all emergency services. But um, but we do have an opportunity here that we can. From a budgetary reason, it's one of those situations where the need is greater than what the financial piece of it is. And we will have, we will make it work and we will pull funding from where we need to. And we will get, we'll get creative with how we've got to do that funding, because we are past the point of. Talking about the need is greater than what our funding is, and that's part of it too, with legislation is saying to them that. The city is using every bit of the property tax dollars that we're earning and it's, you know, um, more than. You know, fifty percent of our general fund taxes are going to emergency services, so um. So with all the tax levies that we have, we're utilizing that because we're required by law provided. Um, but it's, even if we weren't required by law with the police department, it is a need. It's definitely, and I'm not gonna take, I'm not gonna take it away from the fire, the EMS, that's a different conversation. But just being able to focus on our police department right now, I mean, that that's a great idea.
And uh, speaking about the firing EMS, as they respond to pretty much every call, I mean. You know, I've given some leeway on some, somebody calls for a tummy ache or something, you know, like, you know, but a- otherwise any medical call. Fire, some of that, they respond, because a lot of times we're we're needed for that assistance, because, I mean, our. Our volunteers have declined over the years and stuff like that, just from my time here before and just, you know, to now, it's about, I don't see as many people and stuff sign up for the department or the. Emergency services and stuff, and a lot of times my officers and myself and clearly are needed to help. You know, lift some of our citizens to the cots or get them to the local veterans and stuff, because they they just need the manpower and just the person to strengthen and stuff to be there. So that's, you know, something else I do, another responsibility we've taken on just to make sure that West Liberty's getting service that they need.
But our police cars have been, um, correctly, but we do have, we do have some um tax.
Yeah, first aid, AEs.
If we are first on this, um, you know, um, our police officers can do, you know, at least uh compressions and things like that, but.
Yeah, cause uh, cause yeah, uh, just from my latest time here and stuff, I've seen that the. Wesley's had to rely on, and also outside EMS agencies more than I've I've seen before and stuff, which is, you know. It's its own thing and everything, but, you know, that's like what we, like, the response time to that's longer, because I I've been here on shifts where it's, you know. Instead of usually, hey, five minutes from West Liberty EMS, we might have to wait on nickels, or there's one, there's one weird day where we had four different EMS crews and stuff here in town, just because it was just. A hell breaking loose or something, but we had, we had nickels, we had Adalissa, we had Wilton, we had West Liberty and stuff, and it was just, you know. And luckily, we had enough officers that day to help assist on multiple calls there, because, you know, each crew was limited, but their manpower was trying to physically get some of the people to be transported.
No, I don't have any questions, I I mean, more like comments, I do appreciate that you're building culture for the 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 people that wanna stay here. Yeah, for the outreach program to work, people have to see them, you know, and get their, and get their relationship with them. And that's what we're talking about, I don't think that we had that in years past, but that's uh, that's a big job and that. That would be awesome, we can get a established group that's gonna be here for a while, but yeah, I think you're trying for that.
Yeah, and that's one of the options with getting another officer is that we could afford to have somebody to attend the police academy and get somebody in, you know. Earlier in their career, that they can build longevity here uh at Wesley versus always trying to have to snag the certified officer because we have to plug them in immediately. As well, we can take our time now getting some potentially certified, and that way they can, you know, grow with the community here, we've had, you know, several interesting, you know. Younger, you know, applicants and stuff that wanna be officers, that I want somewhere local and stuff to be here, but. But unfortunately, we've had to grab the certified people because of the need, because we need to, you know, put them in the schedule immediately, because. If I tell my officers like, oh, hey, yeah, I got somebody hired, they gotta go to the academy and everything so they can work, you know, they're they're sure they're all being great, yeah. Now I got three months, I'm gonna pick up overtime or, you know, I can't take vacation, all that stuff, so it's just really, you know, taxing on them and stuff, and we just don't have that opportunity right now.
In the meantime, the history's been, when that's occurred, then next thing you know, then you're losing another officer, it's just.
I, it's just a cash game for just for burnout purposes, because they love their job, right, and they just, but at some point, you guys make that men up, I mean.
And it was the same, it was the same choice I faced myself here before, which is, you know, why it's definitely, you know, personal for me, because that was one of the reasons I left, because. I I remember uh, vividly, I was at a city council meeting in April and uh, they told me they weren't gonna hire a police chief until, I think, July at that point, and I was like, alright, I I've. I've tried to do it, I've tried to be the good soldier, I can't do it anymore, you know, and that's one of the reasons I left and that's just, you know, yeah. Yeah, I just don't wanna have have, maybe have to face that same decision, so, because we have a really good crew of guys here and stuff and um. And they they wanna be here, they, you know, they love the departments, they like the people and stuff, and I just, they all want, I wanna get us the resources that we can keep them here and we can. Build that community here, that way it's not just, you know, hey, you have, you call nine-one-one, you have no idea what officers show up, like, I wanna build that community, it's like, oh, hey, you know, it's. It's Derek showing up and Sergeant Walker.
So what our next steps will be is, um, what I'll do is I'll, I'll look to bring um a budget amendment. Um, through to council, and um, I hope we can have time to set the government hearing. Um, for the next, it'll be the first meeting in November, but most likely what we'll do is, um, we'll check with um. Our steps, but if we need to do a resolution, we'll bring a resolution saying, um, at the next meeting at council. To seek your um action item approval to proceed forward with it. So then that may, because right now we've had positions posted, uh, we do have. We do have some candidates um that are available. That we, um, following all of our proper hiring practices, we're, we're in a position where we can hire some of. One of those or two of those um for a full-time position, but we first have to get, um, we, we have to make sure we have council's approval that we can go ahead and get that. That position filled, so, and then we will move to a budget amendment um to um adjust that budget a little bit more. Um, the best that we can, but a- again, I mean, this is a situation, I looked at the budget over and over again and um. We're, we're just, we just need to move it.
Yeah, I I was wondering if you had. Uh, finalized the amount of what we can, like how much we can.
Um, well, we know what we need to, we know, you know, e- essentially staffing one officer and then a full-time benefits, benefits and everything. You know, you're just, you're looking right at a hundred thousand dollars for that individual. And that's not the wage, that's their fringe benefits, that's their uniforming, that's, you know, any type of training that you, that we, that we would also want to. Take, we are already taking into consideration, part of it I looked at is, we have a part-time officer budget. Um, you know, with hiring another officer, then the potential would be is that we would use utilize a lot of that part-time budget. So we would have those dollars to bring, you know, that we carry over. And we're already paying um IFRS benefits, weapons comp benefits on those um, the part-time staffing, so again. You know, we can, we can justify the percentage of that budget. Um, within the other areas of the budget, we'd just be, you know, reallocating some wages for other staff members and hiring, you know, making some. Percentages out of the general fund, um, maybe more over to streets or utilities where we can. But um, when we come into the fiscal year of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget, um, that's where we're gonna. And we will have to reduce some other general fund areas, but again, I mean. That's, that's the need, I mean, it's difficult for us to say to our police departments. Who can't enjoy the benefits of their employment, because. You know, we need more staffing in, you know, parks and rec or library, I don't wanna take away from what they're doing. But at the same time, we have to balance out the safety and the wellness of our, of our officers who are providing our safe community. And the economic development picture and um all of the community placing, all of that that goes there. Over, um, when you say those park and rec and library quality of life, well, our police department provides that quality of life as well in a safe environment. So. I think I said that off.
Yeah, that's one, one of the biggest issues we have is if, you know, we've had officers leaving and stuff and, you know, they give the two-week notice and. There's no way to recruit that within two weeks' time, like, you know, we've been fortunate, we've been able to find some officers that, you know. That are local, that, you know, have just, you know, the stars have aligned a couple times, but that's been more just lucky than anything, uh, because there's. For mo- the most circumstances, you're not gonna find somebody that's certified that you can plug in right away, because. One, we have to do our own department training to help them get up to speed for how Wesley does things and stuff, because they might be, they might be just, you know, coming from. A town or two over and stuff like that, but they do things differently, use different systems and stuff, so just bring them up to speed, it's gonna take a few, few weeks and stuff and let alone if they need any kind of pressure. Courses and stuff or ain't got training or CPR, you know, trying to bring them up to speed within two weeks, that's just really not feasible.
And I think of mental wellness too, because in the past couple of years, we've seen some pretty traumatic cases that have occurred. And we've had uh officers that have gone to go to some really difficult scenes. Unfortunately, given the fact that we've been understaffed, um. My concern is too, along with that burnout, is that we weren't even able to prioritize their wellness. And allow them to seek some, you know, additional counseling or just being able to have a little downtime to be able to. You know, get a breath from some traumatic scenes that they've had to to manage. And again, the two that I have knowledge on, they were, you know, they were first on this in some traumatic situations, so. Um, so we can't even, you know, provide that to our officers and unfortunately, you know. The scary thing is, is, you know, things aren't, things don't appear to, it seems like there's more of these type of scenes that you guys are coming onto versus not, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we currently have six?
Uh, yeah, we currently have six, myself included. Uh, and it just seems like anytime we even, we get to six, it seems to be immediately dropped down to five or four, and that is how it's. The trend's been going, because uh, since I came back, uh, Officer Roosevelt, he he left. Uh, Officer Sal, she she left and then Sergeant Strong, he left. Uh, so, you know, we've dropped down and we were able to add Officer Murdock, we recently just added Officer Ford from part-time to full-time. And so, so we'll recoup some and some of that, but it just seems like as soon as we get close to being a max or be being full-staffed and stuff, we seem to drop down, that just. The lot, we actually are more fortunate than a lot of other departments, because there's other departments that are down, like, double digits from, you know, they're kind of, like, usually staffing.
Do we have, so do we have five full-time currently?
Uh, well, we we have six with myself included, yeah, because uh, we just, we just promoted uh. Uh, Officer Ford from part-time to full-time, he uh, he came from Johnson County and stuff, so we just wanted to kind of, just. Yeah, he's he's a law enforcement official, so I wanted to make sure to, you know, kinda do a test on both parts, make sure, you know, it's something, you know. He wanted to get back into, it's something that worked out, would work out for us and stuff, because that's another uh benefit we would have with more officers, we, you know. We wouldn't have to plug people in right away and then potentially have issues to get back, it takes some more time to evaluate officers and stuff, and also if there's any. Issues, policy violations and stuff that, you know, we'd have to choose between, hey, am I having an officer watch the room tonight, or am I having to have policy man overtime to fill that spot? Because I wanna try to do the right thing and make sure the officer gets the retraining they need, or, you know, if they unfortunately need any time off, because. They mishandled the situation that, you know, potentially putting some people like this. Except when that's something that's kinda happened here before, just from my personal experiences, I saw previous chiefs, they chose. Hey, I have an officer in a car and try to keep everybody happy versus, you know, maybe holding that person as accountable as I should. And that's just, you know, unfortunately, where you get, you know, some officers that they don't change their ways and you get certain attitudes or certain actions from officers and.
I mean, that's where the motivation piece is, so if you're just like that, I mean. Currently, right now, I've got the, but he's telling me we have an officer, you know, uh, even though we've been able to. We were able to fill a position that was vacant, um, with another officer, we currently have their lead right now. Um, and so again, even though we have six, but we're then we're still backed down because that officer is currently removed at this time, and so I need a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so again, you're fortunate that we're, you know, almost to six at that point, and then, like, you know, essentially right now, working officers down in back of the five. For this, for the timing.
Can you make up with part-time?
Part-time when when they're available, we, I usually try to rely on part-time first, just that way, you know, tries to keep the mental health and stuff from the box scrim, just though, working plenty and stuff, uh. But again, that's usually when the part-time can assist us versus, it doesn't always align, fortunately, there's been. Plenty of times where I've gone through the whole list of part-timers and stuff, and then, you know, either been fortunate or I could get people to trade some days off or something like that, or like I said, I've. Put myself in the schedule to have some assistance coverage.
So that'll be a thing, um, like I said, I'll get with, um, the first, you know, with the three, um. Check with our budget amendment timeline, but most likely you'll be the part-time, unless the puzzle will be this to the action to council, that means council. And then, um, based on your trajectory, you can run forward with the budget amendment and. Um, get that process, and like I said, we've got qualified candidates. So, you know, if we have an opportunity to do that, then it's not gonna take us long to fill the position. Um, but the thing is, is that we don't wanna take too long and continually devour our staff as well. Or lose an opportunity for all the candidates, uh, because as Chief said, I mean, it's very competitive out there, I know, so. Or lose an opportunity for all the candidates, uh, because it's cheap setting, it's very competitive out there right now, so.
Yeah, I mean, how many times a week I see postings, hey, now hiring lateral transfers, fifteen thousand dollar sign-on bonus and so it gets. Yeah, I, I, I equate some of the police officer stuff to like NFL quarterback signing, where it's just like, as soon as one department sets the bar here, another department jumps up here and just. It, you know, it's, it's crazy, but just, you know, I, I never thought I'd see some of the, the salaries and stuff I'm seeing today.
And part of me is like, you know, I think of it in an NFL way too, it's like, we haven't sold tickets yet. But we're gonna sell tickets if we do, if we get this person, we're definitely gonna sell tickets, well. I really don't wanna say that's how the city's handling their budget, but I will tell you, I mean, but the need is there, you know. I'm not saying anything, but I mean, the need is definitely, you know. It's been there, it's been there for a while, you know, I just need to.
The, the guy's grown, I mean, since my dad here before, but our staffing level hasn't changed. So it's just, yeah, and if we keep trying to do it the way we are now, it's gonna put people potentially at risk and stuff, either, you know, physically from harm or just. Mental going out and then lose people that later.
I remember in like two thousand and four, two thousand and five, they were talking about. Bringing on a seventh officer, so it's not, it's nothing new.
Yeah, it's.
Definitely.
It's long overdue and West Liberty's been fortunate where, you know. Some of the larger events haven't happened, but that happened nearby and it's just, it's something that's recently happened, it just definitely put this more to the forefront, just, it's time.
Yeah, plus, I mean, it doesn't help that uh we also are very close to interstate eighty and that. Tends to be an area that. We kind of can, can share some of the criminal element, you know, to communities, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we have major highways going right through town and several people especially use that because. They know, hey, it's, it's a small police agency and stuff here and just it's in our last investigative, our last language investigation, can't share. Too many details and stuff, but with some of the connected events and stuff that, you know, things could end very definitely here.
Okay, so, um, you're suggesting that possibly the timeline would be at the next council meeting to bring. Before. Well, an action item in, in the terms of a budget amendment?
An action item in terms of.
Or the higher.
Staffing.
The status of an officer in um, in, and in line with to set a budget amendment. Okay, I didn't know if the two could go.
We actually can, right now our budget can withstand, it can, it can withstand. Having the position, but we will have to have the budget amendment because long-term expense would not. So.
Okay.
Um, so again, you can make the decision to staff the officer before the budget amendment is approved.
Okay.
We have time to.
Okay.
That's right, but we wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't wanna, um, we wouldn't wanna do the budget amendment. In May, we would wanna make sure that we have it done by the end of the.
Right, right.
Expenses of the, of, of, of the officer.
Okay, so uh at least by the first council meeting of November, we should be able to address both of those.
Okay, but hopefully, did you have anything to add to the budgetary or procedure laws or anything? I think so, I think that once we bring that to you, then that will kind of set us up to where we can then knock through. That will give us a little bit more time to look at the budget side of things so that we can proceed with the proper budget amendment for that.
Okay.
So the October seventeenth meeting will have the. And then um by the first of November, we'll have a budget.
Sounds good. Oh, sorry.
Either way, we've got to have a budget amendment. Not just them.
Um, so is there anything else in regards to like? Once we get the seventh officer, are you considering taking one of the officers and devoting them to more of a community, like, uh. What do they call them, uh? I forget the name, where they're kind of dedicated to working with school?
Oh, like an SRO, so?
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that is, um, has been the plan, that's something we've worked with, um, it's just unfortunately some of the stuff that's come up and just the, the daily duties of. We have to live, or near the school, I know that's something we reapproached with them with because they've had an increased activity there, uh, there's been. Multiple fights since the start of the school, and so grants have been uptick there, so that's something they're still following up with, but that'll give us the opportunity where. If that can be something more feasible, you know, to work with them towards that because during the winter months or, you know, January months where schools in session, so we don't necessarily need another. Officer on, on the street as much as those times, that we get the officer back in the summer and then definitely our, our higher calling times and stuff.
Yeah, cuz uh I wonder if that would be a possibility for the school district to sort of chip in. During those times that the officer's on.
That's, yeah, that's still another option we've been looking at, just we haven't got to that point yet, just to move that, you know, stuff come up and.
Because the way, um, just to kind of be a little more, the, the way we. And again, it's nothing static, so, but the way we kick this around is that. If in the future there is an opportunity for an SRO, for one of our officers. You know, then they serve during the school year, but then that provides us an opportunity with that individual for our other officers to take vacations during. You know, the off time that he's not, so then from, you know, June through August, you know, again, thinking of his own vacation. But also being able to bring that full-time officer in to cover some time for other full-time officers to be able to take. You know, appropriate time off um for that, so we were, you know, essentially, it would look like eight officers, but really not because you're only. Um, depending on what an agreement and all of that would look like, you're only getting them, you know, uh, you know, basically a quarter out of the year. So they would essentially fill in during that quarter um in the schedule.
Would they, would they still be, I know, I'm kind of jumping the gun here, but would we just be dependent on the agreement in our percentage, but would it agree?
Yeah, that's something we've kind of discussed with the school board a little bit, but it's also the school board has to be on board because.
Yeah.
We can't move forward with getting some of the grants, because uh I've talked to the superintendent and told him that, you know, if the school board pretty much gives us the thumbs up saying that they, they. Move an SRO, then we can, it can still be contingent upon us receiving the grants and stuff, but we can't do it without their approval for the rest of the year, so it's, we're kind of. You know, stuck at like a little bit of an impasse here and we just haven't had a chance to, you know, reapproach the subject since the school was either started as we. Last time we talked to the school board was uh late July and stuff, so we just haven't had time to kind of reevaluate now that. School's kind of going on and there's, you know, definitely uptick in police presence at the school.
And then would officers still continue a twelve-hour shift?
Uh, this, this, the school resource officer, they'd be a different, uh, maybe another school said schedule and stuff. Uh, the other officers, they wouldn't, uh, but we'd also, getting an additional officer, you can give them flexibility, they can adjust different hours and stuff. Uh, but, but most officers like the twelve-hour schedule because it, uh, it gives you every other weekend off, it's a three-day weekend, so that's really beneficial coming from. Uh, I used to work at Blackhawk, you did, you know, five eights and stuff like that and it's just, you know, by your third or fourth day, you know, you're just already stressed out like. You know, about to lose it right now and stuff, so it's just having that break where you're not working, you know, more than three days in a row, it's just huge.
Yeah, I was wondering if that would change too with our regular officers, the uh twelve-hour would stay or?
Yeah, most officers like, like the twelves and stuff like that, but, you know, with, with adding another officer, you can write some overlap too and you can just, you know. It gives some officers a more anyway and stuff.
From that safety precaution, providing, you know, they would have an overlap with their hours with them at twelve, so they need that two officers. Versus just one officer, and again, there's already that's occurring with our overtime, I mean. The other thing from a budgetary perspective, I mean, overtime is extreme because. Um, whether they want that overlap or not, it's occurring because a lot of times when officers are doing, during shift change. They have multiple calls and so we're, you know, we're averaging, you know, up to a hundred hours sometimes. By weekly because we have officers that are having to stay and cover and overlap anyway. So when you look at a time and a half on top of their twelve-hour shifts, but it's costing our budget. I mean, again, by adding the other officer, I mean, it's, I mean, chances are we may not see. That big of an influx in our budget because if we're reducing overtime, that is going to make up a difference. But those are just the things you're not gonna know until you're actually stuck.
During our, our uh large investigation, we had, we're, we're fortunate, we actually had a part-time officer working that day because he was there and they kind of handled the more mundane. Kind of daily calls that are still occurring, but I had to call pretty much every other full-time officer in to help assist with that. Like just to, you know, to feel that, to work on the investigation and everything like that, so that was part of, part of one of the last increases for the overtime. Because I think everybody was over a hundred hours of that.
Yeah. Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Okay, is there anything else we need to address during the work session? There are cookies. Okay, well, I'll, we'll go ahead and end the session and then we'll just uh take a short break. Thank you both very much.